Anybody there yet? This is for now.
Come on, folks, let's get started at six o'clock here, seven o'clock your time. Where are you guys at?
Someplace else.
Yeah.
Obviously.
Are we on? Good evening. We call the meeting to order of April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, Sling County Planning and Zoning Commission. First item will be approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
It's properly moved and second, we approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. We do have two people on Zoom, so everybody knows. Did I get their votes?
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
And got mine.
Hold your hand up.
I can't. I don't know how to do that.
Okay, yeah, we do have two people voting via Zoom. The next item is approval of the minutes of the March twenty-sixth meeting. We did have a couple corrections added before the meeting.
Correct.
Anything you'd like to add to that?
No, just that the it was mentioned that those corrections had been made by a member of the public. So and they pointed it out to us and we made those corrections.
Okay, okay. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I so approve those minutes.
As printed?
As printed.
As amended?
As amended.
I'll second it. It's been properly moved and second, we approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is we need to reorganize the board, chairman and a co-chairman. Nominations from the floor.
You're doing a great job.
I'd like to nominate Dwayne Flattery to be the chairman.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and second that I will retain as chairman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. I will retain as chairman. I need a co-chair and I will nominate Mr. Brett Ferguson as co-chairman.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and second that Brett step in as co-chairman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Congratulations, Brett. You are officially voted in.
Again.
It was a great campaign we run.
Yeah.
Well-run campaign. Okay, here we go. Continuation. Staff, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, this will be a continuation of the discussion of both the yeah, solar and battery energy storage facility amendments to our regulations. Consideration of these amendments that are based on you had said you wanted Douglas County and so this is both staff and members of the planning commission. I believe in your package, you received some red lines that we've that both Paul and myself and some some others, I think today or we've got, I think Kathleen may have some amendments as well to consider. But the you can see the red lines and basically what we're going to try to do is separate out. We're going to keep separate the solar from the battery energy storage facilities because not all battery energy storage facilities are associated with solar. I think it's better to have those two separated out. And so you're, you know, you can, if you want to, if you're comfortable with the amendments that are used, anything that stands out to you that needs some additional consideration. Obviously, we can continue this again through the public hearing next month to kind of digest those those amendments. Or you can just direct staff to compose the two resolutions. One would be for a the the solar facilities that I would come probably next month with. And if you're comfortable with considering the battery energy storage discussion as well, kind of wrap that in next week as well as a separate resolution. And then or you can just like I said, you can either just go ahead and table it. Those are your two main options. Table it or just direct staff to go ahead and compose the make those incorporate those changes if you're comfortable enough with them tonight to a resolution for next month. So.
Okay. Commission, you have any comments for staff? Any of my Zoom members, any comments?
Uh, yeah, I'll I'll speak if somebody allows me.
I'm okay.
You're on.
Yeah. Okay, as you guys know from my notes, I would prefer that Tim go ahead and remove all battery information from this resolution. I do not want to see batteries in this. I would just assume we work on that at a later date.
Thank you, Paul. Any other comments?
Yes, I have comments.
You're on.
In definitions forty-nine point oh one AH three, it talks about six hundred and forty acres. That would speak to the batteries, I believe, not the solar. But my recommendation based on the needs of the community, the needs of any company that were to be putting in battery storage would be a thousand acres instead of six hundred forty. My second recommendation is a change at forty-nine point oh five standards B two I class one or two soils, not three or above. If you take classes one, two and three soils out of anything available, you're taking too much. Class one and two are the really desirable soils to my understanding. So I would ask that we not exclude class three soils. My third point is also in forty-nine point oh five standards, it's I two. It talks about a minimum of a mile from a residence. And I would say if you're excluding class one and two soils, then you're excluding almost anywhere in the county that would be a mile or two from residences. Residences are often found in lesser soil areas. So I would propose that that would be half a mile, not a full mile. My fourth item is the same standard I three. That has battery storage in there and I I ask that as Paul Fennell did, that that be removed if we're going to separate the two.
Sure.
My fifth item is again in forty-nine point oh five standards M two signage no higher than fifteen feet. If you go out to farms and ranches in this area, there are often lights on barns or poles that are up to forty feet high. So why are we limiting lights at a solar facility or at a battery to fifteen feet? If there's reasoning behind it, I'd like to know because I know people who have lights that are higher than fifteen feet out on their farms. My last point is twelve dash three oh six dash forty-nine point oh six A one. It talks about asking the applicant for the CUP to notify everyone within two miles, which is a huge area, not just within two miles, but two miles from the point to be used. That is more than ten times the required area that the county is required to notify people. So I would suggest that we do something more reasonable. How about within a mile? Two miles is just a huge distance and it's a lot of people.
Good point. Any other comments from the commission? Seeing none, I'll open it up. Public comment, please remember, hold your comments to five minutes. State your name and address and we'll get started. Who's first?
Norman Mount Slana. Who's negotiating the rates that the payment is going to be made per acre? They're paying anywhere from eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars an acre in other places. So if you're getting less than that here in this county, here it is. You're way too low. And the next question is the area. Class four should be included because it is agriculture producing. It doesn't matter what it's good, bottom ground or grassland. You can get three thousand dollars an acre for your grass now. We need food. So you better include three and four. But somebody's not doing a good job negotiating.
We don't negotiate.
Other public comment?
I sort of thought we resolved the whole battery. Oh, Bill De Silvy, Ward nine forty-five South Simpson Road, Gypsum.
Thank you.
I thought we'd resolve the whole battery issue, but it's self-evident. You can't have the solar utility style outlay minus the battery input. So that is something to think about. That's already been the battery size already been it's over with. It's done. So we need to find some other way working around this. Also, in speaking with other people, Mr. Fennell and I had a conversation the other day and basically I think we need to encourage, we need housing, that's evident. Most of the current generation really often doesn't seem too interested in the fable two point five kids' house and a dog. They just need somewhere to live. I think it behoove us to take some initiative and encourage, you know, some little more vertical structures for housing as opposed to sprawling out on acres of that precious farmland as Mr. Fennell pointed out. I I'm a little distressed that we're having to revisit the whole battery stores issue again.
Thank you. Other comments?
Brooke Swisher, sixty-three ninety-eight South Woodward Road. Please don't exclude the three class three soils because that's what the majority of Sling County is out by my area. That's good farm ground still and I don't know if you can eat money, but we provide service to you guys. Feed everybody. So that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. And maybe a lot of people don't understand the difference between class one, two, three and four soils.
I think we'll have a discussion on that after a public.
Right. See, Western Sling County, we're all class one, all the class three we put over in that side of the county. Yeah. You know there was sarcasm in that comment, right?
All too well.
Other public comment? Welcome back.
Hey, good to be back. So Alan Claus Anderson with Paul Stanley Law Firm and then also University of Kansas Law School. Couple things. First, I guess on the soils part, the one thing I'll just mention is Couple of things. First, I guess on the soils part, the one thing I'll just mention as relates to a solar project is if you want to preserve farm ground, a solar project is actually one of the best ways to do it. The encroachments that are coming to agricultural land or ranch land can be actually homes because once a home goes on, a smaller acreage, often that's lost to farming. And it can be invasive trees. That's obviously where we were a lot of range in particular, but we lose a lot of acreage to other things. Solar is a temporary use. It's a long-term temporary use, twenty years or so, but it is a temporary use. And so the soil is actually preserved and can actually recharge. And at the end of the project, it's in better shape. So when we think long-term for food production and things, our solar project is one of the best things for that. You know, we have twenty four million acres, you know, that we in CRP, we're trying to get to twenty seven million acres. So right now we don't have a food versus, you know, electricity challenge. And then at twenty years of that, where the case could go back to that. So that's, that's kind of one thing to consider as part of that. As relates to the battery storage of the regulations, I think it's great to move them and to look at them separately and do that. It can be done as part of a solar regs, but I think it's one thing to remember that battery storage is doesn't need to be, most solar projects are now currently scheduled not to have battery storage as part of them. They can have a part of them, and I think in the future they might. I think battery storage is phenomenal for the benefits to our rate payers and grid. And there's enormous real benefits to reliability plus rates. So there's, there's reasons why it should be coming forward. But battery storage is also, it's not related to the renewable energy. It's, it's grid reliability and, and rate benefits. So there will often be standalone battery storage projects. So doing the regulations separately where they're done that way, I think makes, makes some sense. And so that kind of eases and kind of makes it independent. And with that, I think the other thing, and I, I'm sure you'll end up with a good draft, what's great about doing regulations around battery storage, we have national code standards for that already. So it's, it's much easier to create the regulations. It's kind of something that's more self-contained in the sense that we have the, the citing criteria in those codes that benefit the regulation standpoint, where sometimes it's a little more difficult for wind or solar because there's different parts to it, all of which have different kind of citing standards. So so again, just to kind of summarize, I think it's, that makes a lot of sense. And I think when you get regulations, if they follow, you know, we have national standards should make that pretty easy to do. So, thanks.
Good comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for the expert we have here? We do appreciate your comments. I will ask, is it very common that they break the battery storage regulations away from the solar farms? Are most places doing that?
I think you'll, you, you see that a lot of the time because sometimes it's wind and solar regulations have already been established. And so it was before they had thought about battery storage. So then they come in separately. So I think that's probably more common than anything else. Sometimes like Douglas County, they thought about it at the same time. So they put them in at the, you know, at the same time. So I'd say more often than not, they're on their own.
Good, good comment. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, yeah, that's a, that's a great point. A lot of times with battery storage, they actually don't do a set, set of regulations. They can do it as part of a, just a conditional use permit. And then the conditions are related to following the national standards. I mean, it's kind of the, even though it's, you know, it's an interesting from an electrical standpoint, everything we do with it from a, from a sightings, it's not as difficult. So you'll often see it as just you just put in the code provisions as the conditions. So often you, something, quite often you don't see any specific ordinance is put in place.
Thank you. Another public comment?
Dwayne?
He's here.
This is, this is Brendan Tulsa Marcus. How are you guys this evening?
We're here.
So great. So you asked if, if there was a question to the experts. So in the last meeting, he talked about how there was absolutely no impact on leaching. And I would like him to provide for where there has been fires that has occurred like in Arizona and the different locations, all of the leachates and all the documentation because the data that is easy to say that there's not any type of, but until you have quantitative data that actually shows how that works and, and you have the facts. It's easy to say words, but it's one thing to have the facts. So I'd like to see all those reports that back up what he's saying. And the second thing is that he made a comment that there's these regulations out there. And so everybody keeps wanting to talk about just one NFPA regulation. But if you look at the NFPA recommendations for battery storage, they have almost twenty five different NFPA regulations that they say and, and protocols that they say should be not regulations, but protocols that they say would be best practices along with the DOE and clean energy. So I, 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 I think it's absolutely imperative where he is kind of being subtle and saying the regulations are there. I think you have to very well define under the Department of Energy, which checklist you're going to follow, all the guidelines that you're going to follow. Otherwise, it can just be very vague and then you don't have any type of enforceability. And so that really has to be spelled out and addressed. But the one thing that I wanted to to speak about tonight is that if you look at seven CFR part six fifty seven about prime and unique farmland, there is, there is very well spelled out components under section section. Excuse me just a moment. Six fifty seven point five subpart I where it says the soils and the specific criteria under two I, it says prime lands, prime farmlands meet all the following criteria. Terms used in section are defined by the U S D publication of soil taxonomy Agriculture Handbook four thirty six Soil Survey Manual, Agriculture Handbook eighteen about rainfall erosion. And so if you really start peeling back to see the seven CFR six fifty seven point we're kind of casually discuss soil. And there's actually soils have multiple sub- and so I, I think it's that we as a county and that we as citizens make sure that we understand for the productive capability of all American agriculture that we absolutely protect our best lands for producing food. And this includes for feed, fiber, forage, oil seeds and crops. And so I, I know that there's this huge green initiative right now, and I know that it's a, it's a big thing through the Inflation Reduction Act. And that was part of the, the president's initiative this week on clean energy. But I, 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 I really cannot emphasize enough to integrate the CF, the seven CFR components and to use all the resources that we actually have available to us through the National Resource Conservation Services and Department of Agriculture and use it in a smart way. So that's one thing I want to make sure that we we absolutely address in a very comprehensive way. There was also a studies, multiple studies for the last three years about devaluation of properties. And this was done through Berkeley Labs. And it's a very detailed laboratory report with multiple variables that discuss about the, the devaluation of residents that are close to a solar farm. And so so you had one of your board members was saying to reduce it to half a mile. And I, I, I can't emphasize to you enough to please read these studies before you make that call because Paul Fennell's input of five thousand two hundred and eighty feet was very critical. So that that devaluation and that impact doesn't occur to the people that have worked a lifetime to have the assets that they have and then have it devalued because of a a one profiting facility. So I really wanted to, to bring that forth. And the, my final point that I wanted to speak about tonight and, and and, and how I want to actually address that is, is that in the soil capabilities, we have we have what is known as a very objective way of looking at soil. Okay? And, and Paul Fennell could, can talk about that in a very comprehensive way because of his expertise. But the one thing that I wanted to say is that there is a objective number with multiple variables that go into an evaluation of all the land. So we're talking about prime farmland, we're talking about which is so critical. There's a national commodities activity index. And so I tell me need to anytime somebody, because we, we are looking at a piece we, we, or we want you to allow us to do on our battery energy storage system or even, even any type of residential. And we need to look at that number and say, if it's above zero point three and, and greater than that, we shouldn't want to be touched at all. Because that is essential. It's a, it's a natural and that in twenty years, this will be decommissioned. But even the decommissioning is not. Let us, let us really use the phenomenal tools that we have as citizens and look at things from a national commodities crop productivity index number and make what I call sound objective calls with multiple variables. And in the meantime, when individuals come in and say that there's no leaching, there's no contamination, then all I've asked from day one is just produce your reports. And, and once they're produced, let's look at that curated data. And the final thing that I wanted to
Can you wrap up your comments quickly? We have.
That's fine. Thank you. I really appreciate. I understand. There is a curated article that has been referenced hundreds of times and it's about low level EMF effects on wildlife and plants. And what research tells us to make sure that we explore that variable because that is something that will impact us for decades to come too. So thank you so much for your audience.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. You bet. Thank you for your comments. Next person?
Teresa Swisher, forty eight fifty three East McReynolds Road. So I live a mile from the substation, the summit substation. If you guys choose to do something there, two miles, the, the people that live within a mile or two of that, that substation, if it we've, we've lived there for, for years. I think you, you need to tell us if you've got something going, a CUP, something like this is going in. I don't think two, two miles is too much to let people know something's going to be affect, possibly affecting your lifestyle. The other thing I would, couple of other things, I would like to see you guys step back. Let's, let's take a look at the, the rules and the regs you're, you're writing. I looked at three nineteen today and I didn't see it up there. And maybe you guys were in the process of redoing the, the three nineteen this afternoon.
Oh, three nineteen.
Yeah. I mean, I, I looked at no, one of the three point nineteen, no. So personally, I haven't really had a chance to look through the proposal. And I would like to have the time and, and others. So I would, I would hope that we could take our time, make for sure we covered all of our bases. The other thing that, that I didn't see in, in the brief thirty minutes I, I gave it this afternoon or this evening was I don't see any, any way to regulate. It says that, you know, you're just gonna let whoever the solar company is, you know, police themselves. I think you need to have something else written in there that says that if quarterly, somebody's gonna cut, we're gonna, you're, you're gonna hire somebody, pass the cost on to them. Quarterly, have somebody come in and, and run the noise, the, the air, the, the water, you know. I don't, I don't think that's asking too much. And as far as the one mile from the, the facility as opposed to five hundred and twenty feet. I don't want it. Five hundred and twenty feet is not very far when you've got that in your backyard. The one mile to me makes more sense.
Thank you. Thank you. Public comment?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner. I'm Joshua Swati. I, it's good to be back in this building. It's been a few years. I'm here on behalf of the Advanced Power Alliance, which is the association of developers, owners, operators, engineers that work in the clean energy industry. Just a couple of, I didn't come here prepared this evening to speak, but a couple of comments after hearing some other things. I think it's important to remember we are largely talking about private property that's in the hands of private citizens. And I try to tell everybody when I talk to them, the clean energy industry does not have the power of eminent domain. So we cannot condemn property if we're doing solar or wind or anything associated with clean energy. And so these are private decisions that are made by private landowners. And so we can talk about soil classification all that we want. But I know Salina very well and all of South Ninth is the best soil in the county and the city has just marched right over the top of it. Largely because private property owners have chosen to do with that property, what they want to do with that property. And so while I respect certainly people wishing to protect the property that they own. And there are some regions of Saline County that I would argue are, are simply incredible. I'm a big enthusiast of the Smoky Hills. It is still private property and, and those private landowners have the right to make decisions and they could cover it with houses tomorrow. Or a many number of other things that would be long-term permanent structures on that property. And so I think it's important to keep that in mind as we have a discussion of clean energy, whether it's battery storage, which I would argue is, as Mr. Anderson did so well too, is, is quite simple in fact. And really is not a very big footprint at all, or solar, which is somewhat of a larger footprint. Or what I'm more familiar with in Ellsworth County, which is of course wind, which is a, a larger footprint and of course taller structures, but still private property and you have to balance that appropriately. Thanks.
You're the expert. What was the governor's that she put forward here just this week about the eminent domain?
So that I, I can talk about that issue. I'm not certain what the governor probably didn't put an issue forward on eminent domain, but there was a, a piece of legislation before the legislature this session. So the, the industry in the mid two thousands, we're, we're going to take a deep dive on utility wonkiness here. But if you don't have retail customers, you, you do not have the power of eminent domain. You have to be a certified public utility by the Kansas Corporation Commission, independent power producers. So a developer that comes in and says, I want to build a wind farm or a solar farm. They are independent power producers. They are not regulated utilities by the Kansas Corporation Commission. So they don't have the power of eminent domain. However, people were, they wanted a secondary clarification on that in the mid two thousands for wind because that was really the, the generation source that was being built at the time. So there was legislation passed that said wind and any of its pertinent parts do not have the power of eminent domain. And you're, and you probably ask, well, what's an appurtenant part? So you have wind towers, but then you have the collecting lines that collect all the power. And then you have what we call a generator lead line, which looks like a transmission line, but it's not a transmission line. A transmission line is a very specific term of art and that's heavily regulated. This is basically just a great big power cord that connects the wind farm to the transmission grid system. All of that, none of that has the power of eminent domain. So there was a piece of legislation again, this session. Um, they said, well, let's do that for solar too. And the industry said, well, technically solar is already covered because it's the same independent power producers. They don't have the power of eminent domain. But if you'd like it to include solar, it can include solar as well. And so that was the piece of legislation.
That was the comments that were made. Thank you, Josh.
I'd like to, uh, just kind of interject and just say that, uh, he's correct, um, about, uh, the private use of land, uh, and that's fine. But also keep in mind as a commission that you are, uh, considering the infrastructure that is going to be utilized by these same companies. Uh, public infrastructure that could, uh, also have an impact on it. So that's the other thing that you're going to, you know, during construction or during, uh, any other decommissioning or anything else that's going on too. So that's the other thing you have to keep in mind, uh, not just, uh, looking after non-participating properties or land that is not participating in that, uh, that particular use, but also, uh, resources that the county and that the taxpayer pays and uses every day for like roads and bridges and things.
Yeah. Our number one objective is to protect prime farmland in Saline County. So I guess the only comment I would like to, some sort of motion that we remove all conversation about battery storage facilities from our future conversations and we only concentrate on one item. Is that a possibility?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we remove battery storage from this and concentrate on solar for this.
Second.
Second.
It has been properly moved in second that, that we remove all battery storage facility wording from any amendment that we may put forward pertaining to solar. Is that properly worded?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Unanimous vote, we will remove battery storage from any further discussion at this time.
And I also just to add to your comments, uh, I did include a, a letter from Shasta Power of, uh, on then where they had some comments that they submitted as well.
Well, we have a lot to digest. Um, the comment about notifying people within two miles, that's so easy to do. I mean, that, that's the day and age we're in technology now. That should not be an issue.
I agree.
That, uh, whether or not we put circumstances on where they build at, that's different. We can notify everybody. That's my comment. Somebody else take over the reins.
Well, I'll, I'll second what you're saying because of the fact that, uh, these facilities are not just a power. You know, they're gonna take up a lot of room and, and the people within the neighborhood need to know about it.
Sure. Very easy to do.
Very.
Yeah. So do we want to put anything forward? Do we want to just direct staff to draft some resolutions?
Well, we've already had a few drafts already put forth to the commission. I'd like to discuss those drafts and give the staff something concrete to work on. For example, I'll go back to Kathleen's comment. Kathleen, first of all, were you reading from mine or were you reading from the original?
I was reading from yours when I went through and made my notes.
Okay. Um, first of all, I'll disagree with you on the one thousand acres. Uh, they, the, these companies are getting quite a sufficient amount of money from the government to be able to put these in. Six hundred and forty acres will take care of every house in Saline County. I granted it is not going to impact Saline County. It's gonna go to the national grid and that's on a commercial unit. Uh, six hundred and forty acres is a standard, uh, unit of measurement in the Great Plains. And I think that's a sufficient, uh, acreage for anything that's going to impact the county. Uh, there's no reason to go beyond six hundred and forty acres, um, in my opinion. Um, second of all, uh, I put in, I'm, I'm gonna work with Dwayne on this one. Uh, I am a technical expert on prime farmland and on farmland of statewide importance. There is a reason why I split, uh, the designations and the soil classification, map unit classifications between a commercial unit and a small, uh, small unit. I believe, and Dwayne and I both stated this at the last meeting, that the, the large commercial should not be approved on prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance. Those are designations that go beyond the soil classification. The second thing is I believe that a small unit, a twenty acre unit that maybe DSNO or maybe somebody, uh, uh, Great Plains or somebody like that might put in to benefit their system. Uh, they have no reason to be excluded from prime farmland or from farmland of statewide importance. And they can be essentially, uh, class three or greater. Now then, class three or greater excludes class one and class two lands. Class one and class two lands are also prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance. They can be. Uh, class one land is prime farmland. Class two can be prime farmland or statewide important land. So yes, I did exclude the small ones, but what I'm saying is the class three lands can also be statewide importance. That is the reason why I did not use that terminology in the small units. I use the terminology for the classification system, class three or greater. Class three lands in the Saline County area are soils of statewide importance. That's the reason why I excluded those two classifications, prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance out of the small units. Large units, that essentially means, and you've got, you've got maps. I, I provided y'all maps of exactly what I'm talking about and what the impact is, uh, by looking at those two different designation. So sometime tonight, Dwayne, I would like an amendment or a resolution or however you want to put it, that we, uh, exclude the large units from prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance. And if there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Repeat what you just said again. I'm writing the note.
Uh, for the large units.
Yes.
I would like for us to agree tonight to exclude those from prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance.
Class one and class two?
No, do not use class. I, I'm using those two specific terms. Prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance.
And how can we follow a guideline of what is prime farmland?
You have a map in your, uh, documentation that I provided that Tim's staff.
I'm just writing words based on.
Oh, I see. Based on the NRCS, um, for natural resources conservation, um, um, it's a mapping.
Okay. I'm reading notes as you're talking.
I see. I understand.
Yeah. Excludes yard units from prime farmland based on the NRCS maps.
Right. Farmland, prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance.
I gotta get that. Okay.
Yes. Those are two different classification systems. One is the national classification for prime farmland. It is national policy that when we map the soils, we followed the guidelines on the national policy to identify prime farmland soils. I worked with the state Kansas, uh, Department of Agriculture to develop the Kansas, uh, agriculture, uh, statewide important farmlands for the entire state. And, uh, so there's a two different designations. One is the national designation. The second is a state designation.
Why don't, Paul, why don't you put that the form of a motion that that wording be put in our regulations?
Well, I did that in the document that I provided you, but I understand you want a motion. But let me think about that as we discuss it.
We'll be right back.
I gotta come.
Commercial, right?
I gotta come back with a motion.
Yeah. I mean, that's a good, you made a great point there. And if that's some terminology, we can get in there. Let's just get that put in place.
Well, it's, it's critical that people understand the difference. You know, we have classification systems. Yeah. We have multiple classification systems. Matter of fact, uh, Brenda even brought up NCCPI, which I have my doubts with. But the point is we are very solid on prime farmland. We are very solid on farmland of statewide importance. And we also know what class one, class two, class three, class four, class five, class six, et cetera, land is. And, uh, the, it's important to distinguish between the two systems that we're using here. That is the reason why on the small commercial, I mean, on the small units, I have no problems with class three and above. I did not utilize any terminology for prime farmland or farmland of statewide importance in the small stuff. So y'all continue discussing. I'll think.
Okay. Okay. I mean, that's a possibility. We have some wording here that we could put in. Uh, any other comments? We got a tough one.
Well, if you guys are gonna remain silent, uh, I'd like to know what the remaining commissioners' opinion are on six hundred and forty versus a thousand acres.
Paul, all I can really say is our one expert said any farm under a thousand acres will be of no viable in Saline County. That was the only comment I've had to go with.
Yeah. And that's the only comment that we've heard. We haven't heard anything from the commissioner as a justification.
Right. Right. That's just the only thing I'm, I'm leaning on. I've heard.
Well, my part, just so you understand my thought, number one is six hundred and forty acres is a standard in the Great Plains. Uh, so
Exactly.
Everybody knows the six hundred and forty acres. The second thing is these companies are getting a substantial amount of money. So you can't tell me that they're not willing to invest some of that money on just six, six hundred and forty versus one thousand. What's another four hundred acres for them? Especially when it'll, uh, six hundred and forty acre site, if we maintained it only in Saline County, it would power every house in Saline County. So it's, it's not chump change. It's six hundred and forty.
Exactly. Commissioners, are there comments for Paul? Staff?
I would just add, uh, that, um, this is kind of off the six hundred and forty. Uh, but I just wanted to remind you also that one of the things that I was looking at including in this was making, uh, this board, the, uh, the, uh, a recommending body for any kind of proposal of either solar or any other alternative energy. And, uh, so that means you would make a recommendation. You would not be making a final approval through your conditional use permits. It would be a recommendation to the county commission for any proposal that's involves alternative energy.
Why would we do that, Tim? Because right now, if we set the standards in place, the, that's the guidance that we're, um, basically proposing for, for future, uh, main, uh, development. And if they don't like it, they can always appeal to the county commissioner. So in essence, we are a recommendation as far as the fact that we are not the final authority.
Right.
Okay. I see your, yeah, I see your point. Okay.
So Paul, how, do you think we should go ahead and put a motion forward?
We need a motion that states that the large commercial units will be excluded from prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance within Saline County.
Right. That'll be one section of our conditions.
Correct. That basically sets our, well, basically backs up our mission for preserving prime farmland and the farmlands in Saline County.
Right. Okay. So staff, what do we have as far as a preliminary draft that we want to put anything forward or?
Well, tonight was just, you know, basically to go over the red lines that were, you know, and if you're comfortable enough with those red lines, if there's, uh, I can make that change, uh, that Paul suggested and bring that back to you, uh, but you'd still have other items that, you know, I can probably clean it up. If you're comfortable enough with the wording on it, I can clean it up and, uh, and just include what, uh, uh, those changes that, uh, uh, Commissioner Fennel and staff have, have kind of included to the minor bit that I included, uh, minus what was just talked about with the, uh, making, uh, you all a recommending body.
Right. Is the six hundred and forty acres part of our?
Yes.
Proposal?
Yes. Right now it is. Yes.
Sure.
And, uh, so if you want, uh, if you're comfortable enough with those changes that are being proposed, uh, then you can go ahead, you can go ahead and direct staff to put together a resolution for next month. Or you can table this to consider it, just kind of let you digest a little bit more, uh, and see if you come up with anything else that might be of interest before we.
Commissioners, tell me what you're thinking.
I told you what I think. I'm looking at this map and I see.
No, as far as you want him to draft a resolution, tear up the resolution.
To add in the part that Paul said about prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance.
Right.
Takes up virtually the whole county. I, you know, I don't have a way to gauge the percentage here, but looking at the map, it looks like it would be more than eighty percent of the county would be excluded then. And
That's a little.
Go ahead, Paul.
That's a little high, but I, I get your point.
Not much.
Right.
And I see growth in this county and I don't know anyone who doesn't use electricity. So I think we need to be prepared for growth.
And I agree with you on that, but, uh, you know, I'm sitting here in Boise right now. And I have watched tens of thousands of acres of farmland be totally destroyed by the calipornication of this entire valley. This valley has lost hundreds of thousands of acres of housing. Uh, where are you gonna get your food at? Uh, as a soil scientist who has a heart for the farmland of this country, there are areas outside of the prime farmland and farmland statewide importance that you can put these type of facilities and not impact the, the, uh, uh, the growth of this county. It's basically looking very closely, very seriously at what you're citing, where are you wanting to put it? And to be able to say, what's more important, my food or my electricity? That's my opinion.
Right. Good comment, Paul. Thank you.
I'm not one to argue with Mr. Fennell, but I also know that there are many farmers who can't sell all of their wheat and who can't sell all of their corn. I, I see it beside the road. I see the heaps and heaps as I drive to Dodge City or other places.
Those heaps and heaps are sitting there waiting to be sold.
Not always, Paul.
They're not dumped. At, at the price of the corn right now, the price of wheat, I ain't gonna dump mine.
I'm through.
You're through. Other comments from the commission? I think we're putting some extremely tight regulations on.
We, we talked about it last month and that, that, that was the regulation, but it was something or a way to allow for a conditional use permit to go beyond that. I don't, I don't know how that should be, but I know that that was something that was mentioned last month.
It's mentioned in the document that they can always go to the county commissioners. Keep in mind, we are not the final authority, all we're doing is establishing the guidance.
Get a variance.
They can, they can get a variance from the county commissioners.
A thousand acres if they want to.
Right, right.
Because I do think.
All we're
All the rest of the stipulation, there is a lot of stuff. I mean, all that everyone else, that they have to go through, you know, beyond.
Yeah.
Beyond this, so it's like, I don't know.
I guess I'm going to step forward and ask for a motion to table it so we can move forward. Anybody disagrees or agree?
I disagree.
Give me a motion.
We, we, we've been working on this now for two months. I, at least I have.
Right.
And I put forward some solid recommendations on changes for that. And I would like for us to get those agreed to or changed and hand it over to Tim and staff and say, next meeting, we want this corrected, we want this added, we want this red line taken care of, we want a clean document that we can come back to next month and discuss.
I'm with you.
I don't want to keep beating the dead horse over and over and over because nobody's reading them.
Right. I agree with you totally, Paul, I'd like to see something. Direct staff to draft the resolution with the changes we talked about tonight and let's put it forward to a motion next meeting. Any other comments?
So the only comment I would have, if you can hear me now, is I'm kind of, I don't have a lot of, of intelligence in this area. So that's why I've just been, been listening to all you farmers. And I'm going to follow your recommendation on it because I live in the city and the city ain't going to take care of it anyway. So it's all going to fall on the county, so I've been, been listening to your recommendations and I'm going to follow you, you, county people on this, so.
You make a You make a great comment because I, I too have been wandering the county, talking with people. And the biggest thing they talk about is why aren't you putting them things over on top of the mall or over in the mall parking lot? And I have to explain to them, we're dealing with the county guidance and policy, what do we think about in the county? Well, hell, I don't want it in the county, well, that's you, you got plenty of rooftops in the city, put them in there, that's not the point.
Right.
The point is, we have to have some sort of guidance. And I've done a lot of discussions and a lot of, I've tried to educate people. And I just want this, a solid Celine County document that we can sit down and chew on and say, I want to change this or I want to change that. And be done with it. We've got a, a good foundation with Douglas. We removed batteries, we took that out. We've had a discussion on 1,000 versus 640. We've had a discussion on prime farmland versus statewide importance versus class three and above. These are topics that are probably the major in there. The other thing is, if you're going to try to sell this to the county and the residents, I'm sorry, if it's within a mile of somebody's house, they're going to lose depreciation on their value, on the, the value of their property. And they're not going to appreciate that. So who are they going to come back to? They're going to come back to us because we didn't put that in there and say, hey, we're going to try to keep it away, at least a mile away from your house. I put that in there because I heard that over and over and over. I realize there's a lot of people that's not in my backyard, that's fine. But here, all we're doing is saying, let's cut those people who, this is a, a huge facility. If it takes up 640 acres, that's not something you just drive by and forget about. That's something that's pretty significant in the county. And we should respect the houses within that area. And we should make sure that they feel that we've done due diligence to make sure that their water, their soil and their air is safe. That's the reason why you see a lot of red line on my copy, because I've sat and listened to people, I've talked to people. And I've gone in there, done my research and I've put forth those edits that I thought would be sufficient for Celine County and for us to sit down and discuss. The end.
I need a motion.
You directed staff, what are you asking for a motion for?
Something. Something to adjourn this meeting.
To continue with staff to submit a resolution with the corrections as submitted. And have staff put together a resolution for your consideration next month. So you would be tabling it for.
Can table it.
Yeah.
Or you can table it.
To consider the, that, that resolution that I put together.
Have we given Tim all the information he needs to do that?
I think we, I think we got a really good outline, most definitely.
Okay.
What I can do is I can basically make a clean copy for you guys to review next week, and if there's something that looks kind of out of touch or out of whack, I said you can just let me know and I'll make that correction. And you can, you know, you can always make, you know, as long as it's not something major, I can, you can always approve, recommend approval to the county commission on, you know, the condition that those changes are made before they go to the county commission for consideration for those amendments.
Will, we, you were talking about giving a resolution. So Will, you're talking about having.
Make sure you're at the podium so we can get you on TV.
Sorry. So you're talking about having a resolution or typed up revision by next week?
No, by next month.
By next month, you said next week?
Right.
And I thought.
No.
Okay. So, so how soon before the meeting will it be available to the public?
I try to get my.
I try to have my packets ready, sent out two weeks before.
Okay.
So we can probably have it ready, you know, for the public to view around that same time.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
Hey, one more time, provide me a motion. Paul, can I get you to give me a motion?
You notice Paul's the only one talking here, so since Paul's the only one talking, I make a motion that you take my draft and you make that into a clean copy for the Celine County regulation, allowing Tim to put anything else in there that needs to be in there. And you provide that to us in our next meeting in May. So we have something to discuss.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we provide the draft that Paul gave to the staff to clean it up and bring it back to us for discussion at the next meeting. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Aye. Motion fails.
Then come up with a motion then.
I guess I'll ask for motion to table it.
I motion that we table it next month.
Motion dies for lack of second. I guess.
Unless somebody's got something better.
I guess I do have the power to adjourn the meeting.
You have to either, we, we have to figure out, you know, when we're, what we're going to do here with this. If you want to, what I can do is you can just direct staff to, to, to make a clean copy to look at and review. And you wouldn't have to necessarily make a final decision on it, it's just to clean it up, to make it look, you know, easier to, you know, for, you know, to see all the changes that have been proposed tonight. You wouldn't have to necessarily approve it next month, you could just look at, see if there's, give you a chance to look it over and see if there's anything else that needs to be changed or addressed.
Commissioner?
I have a question. I would like to know if there's a way that we can see in addition and addition to this map showing where the population is out in the county.
I can see what we can do, but that might take, you know, that I don't know if our GIS has that or if we've got the, I mean, I can probably do that with the census information, but see if the GIS can work on that, but we'll see. I'll, I'll see what I can do. If you want.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I need a motion so we can adjourn this meeting.
I motion that we get this cleaned up so that we can look at it and study it at the next meeting.
Perfect.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, staff, how do you want to word that? Direct staff to draft clean resolution.
Draft a clean resolution to.
With the words that we've discussed tonight.
Yes.
About the prime farmland and statewide importance.
Cleaning up the red lines and the, the other.
640 acre limit.
Yeah, stuff, and so give you a chance to look it over.
Notifying people within two miles, some, some things like that that we discussed.
Yes.
Those would be in there. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Just to make sure everybody reads it next one, okay?
Motion for adjournment?
I motion we adjourn.
Being adjourned.